All right, we are calling the public, the 7:00 PM public. Okay, sorry. Very good. So we are calling the 7:00 PM public hearing to order. This is application of Steel Road LLC to amend the boundaries of SDD number 139 located at 243 Steel and SDD number 33 located at 253 to 275 Steel Road and 2021 Albany Avenue by rezoning a portion of SDD number 139 to SDD 33 and rezoning a portion of SDD 33 to SDD 139. We will begin by roll call. Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Blanks.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Poland.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Winograd.
Here.
And Mr. Zidaneowicz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. LeBrow, and we will now begin with a presentation from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cantor, members of the West Hartford Town. Good evening, Mayor Cantor, members of the West Hartford Town Council. My name is Jeff Sager, and I'm here on behalf of 243 Steel Road. So we are here this evening to discuss with you a lot line modification between the property located at 243 Steel Road and the land to the north of it. The land to the north is owned by the Mercy Community, also better known as the McCauley. So in its current condition, the site drive for the McCauley is located on land owned by 243 Steel Road. And of course, they have an easement to use that, but they would rather own it in fee simple title. So what we are proposing to do is to convey to the McCauley from 243 Steel Road approximately 0.67 acres of land and to receive from the McCauley to 243 Steel Road approximately one half acre of land. Separately, you'll receive this evening an application on behalf of 243 Steel Road to construct a new 18-unit building on the 243 Steel Road property.
Mr. Sager, the mic just don't wander too far.
Sorry. That building would be proposed to be located about 450 feet from Steel Road along the north property line of 243 Steel Road and the common property line with the McCauley. No portion of that proposed building would be located, would be situated on land the 243 Steel Road could receive from the McCauley. That land would be used exclusively as open space, as a setback, and as a landscape buffer. The McCauley is aware that we have this application that we filed for your consideration for the 18-unit building, but they, they're desirous of securing an approval for the lot line modification, and they didn't want the applications confused. So if for any reason the 18-unit building was not approved, they still wanted the ability to have the lot, lot line modification effectuated. So town staff has reviewed the lot line modification, and they've approved it. And if you were to concur in that outcome, it would also require a rezoning of the swapped land. So the land that's being conveyed from 243 to the McCauley would have to be rezoned from SDD 139 to SDD 33, and the land that 243 Steel Road would receive from the McCauley would have to be rezoned from SDD 33 to SDD 139. So just to summarize, the driveway for the McCauley is located on the 243 land. We would like to rectify that situation, and we can talk about the history of that if anybody wants to know. But in any event, to rectify it, we would convey land to them. We would receive land back that would enable us, with our new proposal, which is not under consideration now, to meet the setback, landscape buffer, open space requirements of the regulations. And that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sager. Before we go to council, I would like to see if there's any public comment. And then while you are checking, Mr. Dodge, were there any comments that were written and mailed to you, Madam Clerk? Okay, so we received no public comments via email. Is there any public, so nobody signed up to make any public comments? And so now we can go to questions from the council. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Sager? Mr. Davidoff, of course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the last public hearing that I'll be sitting on, Mr. Sager.
I saw that in the paper.
So, of course, no public hearing would be complete without a question and/or a comment. I think it makes a lot of sense to convey the property with the easement to, to McCauley. It makes a lot of sense. I won't comment on the application that's going to come before the council because that would be inappropriate. But I do want to say that since we first met back way back, and we were here till almost 3:00 in the morning, the concerns of the people who spoke in opposition to this application initially were never proven to be correct. This, this particular development has not generated the traffic that we heard speaker after speaker voice. And I have several friends that live at this development, and they're quite pleased with the quality and the amenities that are offered. So you definitely, at the time and currently have met a need to have West Hartford residents who have downsized moved into this particular development. And I thank you for making that significant and prudent investment in our community and wish you well in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Well, it's, it's been one of the extraordinary privileges of my career. And while we'll take credit for the execution, we all worked very hard on it together. And I think it was more than one night at 3:00. But yeah, I mean, working with this council, working with DrAC, working with the building department, the planning department, the iterative process that we went through, and it, you know, it took courage, right? I mean, it wasn't an easy approval. And I think that we stood the test of time so far, but I'm mindful of the admonition of some of the neighbors that we need to stand the test of time for the duration. And that's our objective.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Are there other comments from council members? Okay, so I also, Mr. Sager was also, Mr. Davidoff and I were both here. And, and I, I will say, I actually was talking to a neighbor in the neighborhood, Governor Square neighborhood, and, and who was adamantly opposed to the, to the project. And she told me numerous times, but reiterated the fact that how grateful she is for the terrific partnership, the neighbors are, you as a property owner are, are so meticulous, and the care for the property is, is really evident, and how well-run it is, and the pride you take in being an owner there is, is really, makes all of our lives much better. So we are grateful for your investment in West Hartford, your leadership, because I think you paved the way in showing that multifamily housing and single-family housing can live very well together.
Well, I appreciate those kind words, Mayor Cantor, but I want to be very careful not to take too much credit because it's really not due. We, it was very much a group effort, and it still is to this day. The women and men that make that work, that incredible neighborhood, and the town. I mean, it's just, it, as I said, it's just, it's been a real privilege.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
While you're here and before we close, I need to read some things to the record. We're closing the public hearing. But can you speak about the occupancy and what is going on with your.
Yeah, would you mind terribly if I reserved that until?
That would be, yeah, that is probably more appropriate.
Yeah, that was my intention, to give you demographic and to kind of walk you through what we had projected and what occurred.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. All right. So any other questions from the council? All right. So I will read into the record, letter dated February 9, 2023 from Town Plan and Zoning Commission recommending approval, letter dated February 24, 2023 from Design Review Advisory Committee recommending approval. And if, see if there is no more, and we will close the public hearing. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will start the council meeting right at 7:30. So we have about a little less than 15 minutes, 13 minutes. Thank you.
a couple of minutes. So, we are calling the 7:30 Tuesday, February 28th Town Council Meeting to Order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks?
Present.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Cortez?
Here.
And for the last time, Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay?
Here.
Ms. Pollan?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
And Mr. Zedanowitz?
Here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. My little fuzzy thing. Okay. Before we start the agenda on the Town Council meeting, I'm going to just pause for a moment. We had two tragic deaths this week of residents of West Hartford or from West Hartford. One is Song Cho, Cho, sorry, 54 years old, died in an avalanche on Sunday on Colchuk Peak in Washington. We thank the Snoe County Sheriff's Office helicopter rescue team for their efforts in recovering Mr. Cho's body. We are thinking about the fellow climbers who also died in this avalanche, and think about anyone that he has left behind. It was very sad news. We are also devastated to hear, I think many of you heard today, of the killing of 27-year-old Ilan Ganellus in Israel yesterday. Ilan grew up in West Hartford. His family are members of Young Israel. Both of his parents are doctors. He graduated from Hebrew High School of New England, volunteered at Jewish Family Services. He was a very good saxophone player, and many people enjoyed his music. He deferred his enrollment at University of Michigan and enlisted in the U.S. military and spent a year in Israel. He then enlisted state in Israel and enlisted in the Israeli Defense Forces, where he worked as a computer programmer, worked for the Knesset Finance Committee, and Israeli Ministry of Finance. He returned to the United States, attended Columbia, where he graduated in 2022 with a degree in Sustainable Development and Neuroscience. He spent a year in Beijing and worked as a geospatial analyst at a campus center. The Ganellus family and the Young Israel community is in our hearts and prayers in these difficult days. He was a classmate and a friend of my niece, who spent many Shabbats with his family. She also was in the IDF, and they would share experiences. He was always there for his friends and community, and he said she, every, he was, she, he said, I'm sorry, she, everything she said, everything Panina said that came out of his mouth was out of kindness and sweetness. He had a great sense of humor. His timing was perfect, she said. His family has traveled, Ilan traveled to Israel to attend a wedding when he was killed. The family was left to go to Israel to bury him there, and they will be back. The funeral is tomorrow, and they will be back on, either tomorrow night or Thursday, probably Thursday morning. So, he leaves behind Doctors Andrew and Carolyn and Simon and Gabriel Ganellus. And we are, and I will say, may his memory be for a blessing, and we are all so saddened by this tragic, senseless loss. All right. I also have a proclamation that I'm going to wait to deliver until we get to something a little later, and we will begin with the public forum. Is there anybody that has signed up to speak to anything on this agenda? Thank you. I have John Lyons signed up to speak on the agenda, so John, come on up, say your name and address for the record. If there's anybody else that hasn't signed up or would like to come up and speak, just, you can do that. This has to be on something on the agenda, and I ask you, limit your comments to three minutes if there are multiple speakers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello, my name is John Lyons. I live at 21 Chestnut Hill Road here in West Hartford. I wanted to say a few words tonight to celebrate Leon Davidoff, but I've struggled to find just the right words, as he's given so much to our community and to me personally. How do I express my personal gratitude, and what has he taught, and how has he impacted me? I should start off with some words that I feel best describe him, in my eyes. Trusted, dependable, genuine, capable, thoughtful, and hardworking. I feel fortunate that I've been able to see his incredible dedication to West Hartford, not only through my attending council meetings, but my serving on the DTC and witnessing his dedication to informing the committee what is going on in town and sharing his role in the activities of Town Council. He gives of himself in so many ways. Leon has given our community nearly 16 years of unpaid volunteerism, serving on council. His acts of kindness and giving outside counsel probably can't be calculated. His service to constituents is second to none. To that point, I want to tell a story of something that I saw recently, which I think personifies who Leon is and how he puts West Hartford first. It was a tough negotiation. The developer had a bold plan for Arapaho Road, I always struggle with that, Arapaho Road, and would, that would transform the area and provide construction jobs, retail jobs, retail space, residential space on and around LaSalle, while providing additional parking and moving it underground, eliminating several paved lots. All of this while increasing tax revenue to town. The plan was not without opposition, however, and addressing that opposition to let them know they had been heard was vital. It was Leon's turn to speak just before the vote by council to either approve or reject the plan. Leon keyed his mic, and he spoke for 22 minutes. I think those 22 minutes really mattered. He spent 22 minutes discussing his thought on the project from all sides, how it benefited the community from a real estate and consumer perspective, jobs creation, additional tax revenue to the town. But what struck me was the amount of time he spent sharing his thoughts on how important constituent outreach was for this project, and how important continuing outreach would be. He wanted to make it clear, for the record, how much it mattered to him, and that he was listening to those that opposed this project just as much, if not more, than those that endorsed it. He wanted to make clear on the record that even with the project being approved and moving forward, the service and outreach to the citizens had to continue. These moments for me were insights into Leon's character and the man that he is. Sadly, tonight, we say goodbye to Town Councilor Leon Davidoff. While the loss to West Hartford, I am sure will be felt, his new role at Town Clerk comes at a vital moment for election integrity, and I would be hard-pressed to think of somebody with more integrity to sit in that chair and fill less issues. I think West Hartford was lucky to have him as a leader. He made the kind of impact to our town that will be felt for generations. From my little seat in the room, all I can say is, thank you, Leon. Thank you. And let's go Mets.
Uh-oh, that's the real connection.
I wanted that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to something on the agenda? Okay. We did receive written, an email that I will read. This is, in, this is about the resolution, resolution condemning the recent worldwide increase in anti-Semitic violence and harassment. Dear West Hartford Town Council, as the Chair and Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Hartford, we are writing in support of the Town Council's resolution condemning the recent worldwide increase in anti-Semitic violence and harassment. As we see all too well in the media and beyond, that antisemitism is on the rise across the country, including here in Connecticut. With the recent Day of Hate targeting Jews, February 25th, 2023, some celebrities' comments and increases in hate crimes, Jewish communities around the country are understandably on edge. It is vital to oppose hate and antisemitism in all its forms while helping to educate our communities. As Town Councilors in West Hartford, your leadership at this critical juncture is appreciated. We hope that your action will serve as an example for other municipalities in Connecticut and beyond, that it is important for leaders to oppose hate and antisemitism in all its forms. Our JCRC is available as a community resource should you need assistance opposing instances of antisemitism or other forms of hate. Kind regards, Gary Starr, Chair, Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Hartford; Danielle Mogadom, Director, Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Hartford. Okay. With that, we can go to, there's no more public comment. We can go to number four, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move the items 5A, 5B, 7F through 7M, 10A and 10CV placed on the consent calendar.
Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the items are placed on consent. Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Seven, Mr. Sweeney.
Six.
Did I miss it? Six, Mr. Sweeney. I did.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the application of Steel Road LLC to amend the boundaries of the SCD 139 located at 140, 243 Steel Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To approve, is there any discussion on Mr. Davidoff? Why don't you go? We'll give you not 22 minutes, though.
I have no commentary.
I don't believe it. Seriously? Get out. All right.
First time.
All right, go out, go out in staff. Okay. I will just say, this was the subject of the public hearing right before this council meeting. It is a sort of a, it is a land swap of sorts to fix an easement and to allow for a buffer zone for a further application that will be before the council. All right. No further comments? All right, we'll, okay, Ms. Fay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Cantor. It certainly makes sense, what was proposed, to have the right-of-way turned into an actual property conveyance, and for consistency's sake, to have the zone changes made. So, obviously, this is something that I will support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. All right, and I do want to thank Mr. Sager for his continued investment in West Hartford. With that, we can go to a roll call, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigrad?
Yes.
And Mr. Zedanowitz?
Yes.
It is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Number seven, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we receive and refer to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission and track for the required review for the public hearing on April 11th, the application filed on behalf of Steel Road LLC, owner of 243 Steel Road.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. B, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we receive and refer to the Town Planner and Zoning Commission and the Capital Regional Council of Governments for the required review set for a public hearing on April 11, 2023, 6:44, 6:45 p.m. The ordinance amending the special flood hazard areas standards.
Thank you. Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. How, D, Mr. Sweeney?
C.
C, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, without, sorry, without objection, I move that we receive and refer to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and the Capital Region Council of Governments for the required review set for a public hearing on April 11, 2023, at 6:55 p.m. The ordinance concerning outdoor dining.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney, is there any objection? All right, there being no objection, the motion is adopted. T, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting a Department of Children Families Youth Services Bureau grant to support youth mentoring services.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Ledweth, can you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town applied for and was awarded a Juvenile Review Board Support and Enhancement Grant in the amount of $23,000 from the Connecticut Youth Service Association. This grant supports mentoring and group services for youth who have been referred to the Juvenile Review Board. Our Social Services Department oversees a contract with the Bridge Family Center to act as the town's youth service bureau, so the town will pass through this grant to the Bridge to expand their mentoring program to include Juvenile Review Board-referred youth. We did mention, we did discuss this at a recent human and community services meeting, and through you, Mayor, I'd open it up to the council for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. Ms. Pollan, would you like to?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ledweth, and through you, Madam Mayor, just ask my colleagues for support of the acceptance of this grant. These kids who are referred to Juvenile Review Board are typically kids who have gotten into some trouble, but we believe that through mentorship and work with the Bridge, they could be brought back onto the right path, and this grant will certainly help with that, with that endeavor. So, I would encourage support.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, just a quick question, Mr. Ledweth. How is the program evaluated through the grant?
So, our Assistant Director, Ms. Mazinski, from Social Services, will work with the Bridge to assess the, the program. will work with the Bridge to assess the the program. And we'd get a report through them and certainly bring it back through Human and Community Services to keep you updated.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Okay, I, we can, any other comments or questions? All right, with that, we can go to a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Letter E, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution condemning the recent worldwide increase in antisemitism, antisemitic violence and harassment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. There was a recommendation of this a while ago to, from our Human Rights Commission, and it was a little different request. But, but I think it gets us to the same place. We have been hearing, I think many of us and our police chief has been hearing about an increase in, in violence with national, worldwide and nationally. And there are many communities that have been touched by a lot of increased incidents of antisemitism. There had been isolated incidents here, but not overwhelming. And I think that, you know, knock on, knock on wood, but we know, know community when people say, you know, this could never happen here, that's, that's never the case. It can happen anywhere. So I just would like to read the resolution. And, and this was, had input from a number of counselors on my, on my, and I, I'm sure that we will have support, unanimous support. But whereas antisemitism is an insidious form of prejudice, stretching back millennia that attacks the humanity of the Jewish people and has led to violence, destruction of lives and communities and genocide, whereas conspiracy theories that Jews are uniquely evil and influential has led to mass killings of Jews throughout time, including poisonous Nazi ideology that resulted in the murder of 6 million Jews, including 1.5 million Jewish children and millions of others of the Nazis in Europe. Whereas such conspiracy theories are being promoted by mainstream politicians, their associates, celebrities, and influencers. And whereas over the course of the past decade, Holocaust distortion and denial has grown in intensity. And whereas there is documented and dangerous rise of antisemitism globally and in the United States, where Jews are increasingly affected by their grotesque spread of misinformation and lies, including blame for the spread of COVID-19, false claims including control of the media and the financial system, accusations of dual loyalty, and multitude of negative stereotypes. And whereas the use of antisemitic language, conspiracy theories, and hatred has increased on multiple social media platforms, from Facebook and Instagram to Twitter and TikTok, among others, including tropes about Jewish control and messaging praising Hitler and vilification of all Jews. And whereas there are regular acts of antisemitic violence against synagogues, Jewish schools, and other Jewish institutions in the United States and numerous attacks on American Jews, leaving many Jews feeling increasingly unsafe in public spaces and houses of worship. And whereas antisemitism is often accompanied by other forms of hatred, hatred that is directed at other racial, ethnic, or religious groups, immigrants, LGBTQIA, communities, and more, an interconnected hatred that is all the more difficult to defeat. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of West Hartford supports the right of all Americans to freely exercise their religious beliefs and rejects all forms of terror and hate. Be it further resolved that the Town Council calls on all political and community leaders to reject antisemitism in all its forms, including but not limited to the propagation of Jewish conspiracy theories and Holocaust denialism, and associating with or refusing to disavow persons who propagate such beliefs. And be it further resolved that the Town Council supports the Jewish community's partnership with other marginalized communities in order to stem the tide of all hate and promote a spirit of acceptance. And be it further resolved that the Town Council supports the cooperation between law enforcement and our local Jewish institutions to develop and implement safety protocols and provide timely responses to threats. And be it further resolved that the Town Council supports our schools in providing accurate, age-appropriate curriculum regarding the Holocaust. And it's unfortunate we need this, but I think we do. And I think it, it says, it says a lot. All right, are there any other comments, questions on the resolution? Okay, Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you for sponsoring this resolution this evening. I'll be brief. There's, there's no place for hate. And the best way to confront antisemitism is to stand up and condemn it. It's just that simple. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Any other comments? All right, Ms. Pollan?
Yes, thank you. I'll, through you, Madam Mayor, I will add my comments to those of my colleague. And thank you for your leadership in bringing this forward for all of us tonight. And in advance, thank my colleagues for, for supporting this. You know, as long as the Jewish religion has existed, so has antisemitism. And this has shown its face in many ways over the last thousands of years, including where Jewish people could live, what professions Jewish people could hold, where they could bank, who they could marry, and on and on. And you think about America and 2023, and most of those overt discrimination policies have gone away. But unfortunately, what remains is still some subtle discrimination, even some overt discrimination we're seeing in graphical representations and statements by celebrities, athletes, politicians, and other people. Their prominence and the continuation and growth of these antisemitic statements unfortunately empowers other people to feel comfortable making statements like that out loud and sometimes, too often, incites violence as well. And I am grateful to be part of a Town Council that is willing to step up and say, this is not okay in our town. We need to make sure that our town is accepting of all people, of all religions and ethnic backgrounds. And I thank people in advance for your support of this and, and helping to make this resolution live in the actions that we take moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Wenigrad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, thank you for your leadership on this. And I'll be fairly brief. It is interesting historically how antisemitism never dies and metastasizes in one way or another. And we're seeing this, you know, new threat currently. But it obviously comes in waves. And what is sort of interesting about it is the association with broader prejudices, you know, attacks on internationalism or, what's the term? You know, the stuff against Soros now or democracy. And, and, you know, and the linkage, it, it's never just about the Jews. It's, it always combines with attacks on other groups perceived to be vulnerable. So I thank you for your leadership on this. I thank the town for being a place that is, one that will fight not just the antisemitism, but all the other oppressions that somehow end up being linked to it, whether it's, again, regarding race, ethnicity, immigrants, LGBTQIA. All these somehow get combined. And I think it's important for us to recognize who and what the enemy is. And to that extent, it helps to talk about this, to unite people who oppose this hatred. So again, thank you for putting this forward and to my colleagues. And appreciate the support of the community as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wenigrad. Okay, I also want to thank the Human Rights Commission for their work on, you know, advocating for, for human rights for everybody and, and bringing this forward for, they've been, they have been working on this for a while. And specifically, Don Ennis and Eric Schoenberger, Schoenberg, sorry, and Corporation Counsel's Office for helping with some of the verbiage and content. So, all right, with that, we can go, all those in favor, voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. All right, we go to reports from the Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin with a summary of upcoming council business. We do have a Public Safety Committee meeting tomorrow morning, March 1st at 8:00 AM. That meeting will be held virtually. We have a Public Works Facilities and Sustainability Committee meeting on Thursday, March 2nd at 6:00 PM. That meeting will also be held virtually. Then next Wednesday, March 8th, we have the Special Services District Special Meeting. It's a preliminary budget meeting that'll be held here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. And then we have a special Town Council meeting that will be held following that meeting at 7:30 PM. And the Town Manager will present the fiscal year '24 budget in that special meeting. Wanted to mention our bond sale from last week. The town received 16 bids from the sale of its $15 million in general obligation bonds on February 23rd, with the lowest bid receiving a true interest cost of 3.04%, which was the best available rate at the time of sale and an excellent indication of the town's strong financial position and AAA status. The bonds will fund a variety of capital improvement projects for both the town and school district, including street safety improvements, stormwater management systems, and school security upgrades. We will also be hosting our Spring CERT basic training course. West Hartford's Community Emergency Response Team, CERT team, is looking for new members to attend its next basic training class scheduled to begin on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at the Elmway Community Center. There is no cost to participate. CERT training consists of a standardized 20-hour course in emergency first aid, disaster psychology, animal sheltering, fire safety, and terrorism. Additional training is provided in shelter management, first aid, and disaster preparedness. Folks can sign up to, online to sign up for the CERT training class. And this, this report will be uploaded onto our site along with a link to the CERT training enrollment process. So that concludes my Town Manager's report. Through you, Madam Mayor. Any questions from the council we'd be happy to take?
Thank you, Mr. Ledweth. Are there questions for the Town Manager? I'm sure there's a lot of questions coming. So, all right, okay. Seeing no questions, we, report from Corporation Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And with your indulgence, I usually don't have the privilege of the floor when we are debating whether to accept a resignation or not. So I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of myself and everybody in my office to thank Councilor Davidoff for his service on this council and to the town. I did have the privilege of serving with you on the Town Council. And Leon, I just want to thank you for your friendship over the years and especially for your mentorship, both when I was on the council and also in my new role. And I will say that there was some relief in my office, too, when we found out that Essie was retiring, that we were able to find such a competent replacement with the institutional knowledge that you have. So we very much look forward to having the opportunity to continue working, working with you. Madam Mayor, I don't have anything else for my formal report. I will note that we do have an executive session scheduled for later this evening. However, due to a scheduling conflict, we are going to look to move that to March 8th. And so there will be no executive session. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Okay, seeing none, we will go to 10B, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor is with great hesitation that I make a motion to receive the communication from Councilor Leon Davidoff resigning from the Town Council.
Motion's been made and seconded. I am using my, my privilege to present a proclamation to Mr. Davidoff. And I will, I will close with some other comments, but right now, I would like to present the proclamation. So, Mr. Davidoff, will you come up to the podium, please? We were going to make it 10 pages, but we decided to try to keep it to one. All right. Whereas Leon Davidoff resigned from his Town Council position on February 28th, 2023, after 15 years of public service, Leon Davidoff has had the best attendance of any Town Councilor and has only missed one meeting in 15 years. And whereas Leon Davidoff joined the West Hartford Town Council in November 2007, has served on every committee and has enjoyed chairing the Public Safety, Community Planning, and Economic Development Committee, and Finance and Administration, Leon Davidoff diligently gets things on the record, reviews variances and conditions meticulously. And whereas Leon Davidoff has been a member of several boards and committees, including serving as an alternate and Chair of the Town's Planning and Zoning Commission from 1999 to 2007, his knowledge has made him a resource and leader in zoning. And whereas Leon Davidoff's commitment to community service is unmatched, he has served on the AICAN PTO as their treasurer and as a member of we two, we two? No, okay. The West Hartford Symphony Orchestra and Democratic Town Committee. He is President of the West Hartford, this is really terrible quality, sorry, West Hartford Fellowship Housing and Vice President of the West Hartford Fellowship Housing Development Board, where his work and leadership have been so important and helpful. And whereas Leon Davidoff has been a member of several boards and committees for neighboring towns, including serving as a Town Council for the Town of Newington from 1991 to 1996, President of the Newington Chamber of Commerce, and President of the Farmington Rotary Club, and as a Paul Harris Fellow. And whereas Leon Davidoff is a wonderful listener who works to find consensus and common ground with civility and decency and is a highly respected elected official. He is known to be highly professional, focused on important issues, reliable, candid, and ethical. Town Council meetings have been more meaningful, and yes, a bit longer because of Leon. Whereas it has been an incredible honor to serve with Leon Davidoff. We thank his family, Lexi, Becky, and Lonnie, for sharing him with us during countless evenings and weekends. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, here having benefited from his years of experience, wisdom, and friendship, do hereby offer sincere appreciation to Leon Davidoff for his dedication, commitment, and service to the town of West Hartford, and share an appreciation for his continued commitment in service and wish him much success in his soon, soon-to-be new role as Town Clerk. Okay, are there any comments? Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How can I help you? Are you okay? How are you feeling? These are how Leon would basically start every conversation, not coming at you with what's going on with him, but asking if you're okay. Is everything all right and your family going all right? You know, he would constantly say, oh, I have your back. I'm there for you. And I think, as we see here today, he didn't just say that. He said it to everyone. And it's just great to see all the people that are out here today because I think there are a lot of people that say those things and don't really mean that. And when I first got to see that people heard this story about this with me and Leon was, I first saw it in real action was, and I'm glad, I'm glad our probate judge is here, was on his famous campaign for probate judge. And seeing Leon in action, working for his dear friend and working tirelessly through that campaign. And we all have our own campaigns, have had our own experiences through that. But I, I've spent a lot of time campaigning. And through that, you get to see people in a different way. And that's where I really got to know Leon and his family, where we became pretty close. And from, from that moment, he was always checking in. How are you doing? Are you okay? How can I help you get better? Is there something else you need? How, and then the, the other, most consistent that he would ask you about is, how's your family? How are your kids? How's Whitney? How's Rory? How's Claire? And now how's Finn? And people that ask you those questions constantly on a continuous basis are people that just generally care about you. And that's who Leon is. He, he cares about who you are, not about the space that we're in or the, the service that we're doing. And that's just who he is as a genuine person. just who he is as a genuine person. And yes, he does talk a lot about zoning. A lot. But what I'm truly gonna miss is those conversations that we had about, you know, the, the comings and goings of town council late at night, and, and just constantly walking me through, I think Council Dodge just talked about how he, he brings people and he takes care of them, and has mentored every, just about everyone else who has been on here. And, and for me, Leon really just took me under his wing. The first moment I met him at, in Owen's office during that campaign, and really just said, we need to get you involved, and this is how we're gonna do this. And it's been consistent from day one, and it's just been amazing to be on this journey with you. And it's amazing to see how your family has grown, and how, how they've grown, your two daughters have grown into these amazing human beings that you've put out in this world, who are doing amazing work out there. And then, the other benefit of knowing you, Leon, no offense, is, is knowing your fantastic wife, Lexi, who, if you are in anywhere around her, she brightens your day up. She's in constantly a, a positive mood, and you are very lucky. But that's the kind of man he is, just constantly asking, how can I help you? How can I make your day better? Not about, not about him. And in this age that we are in in politics, it is very, is very rare that you find people that care about other people before themselves. And it is just an absolute honor to serve with you. And not that you're going too far, you're gonna be right over our shoulder, looking over us, as if something's changing there. I don't, I don't see anything changing. But, you know, it, it's just an absolute pleasure to serve with you. Thank you for everything that you've done for me. And again, the testament to who you are is, look at all the people that, that are here for you right now, because you asking, how can I help you? How can I help you? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. That was, okay. Ms. Blanks, go down here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I am humbled to share an expression, expressing a huge thanks to a man that has committed his time, legal expertise, wisdom, and public service to this council and committees, as well as a whole bunch of other things. I am particularly thankful for your support when I was elected in my first term at the top of the pandemic, where we all navigated for the first time, meeting on a virtual screen. I was nervous about the technology, i.e. turning on the camera, mute and unmute, the screen freezing. All the unexpected that could happen did happen. But Leon, Councilor Davidoff, reassured me I wasn't alone, and we turned to our young adult Gen Z daughters to help us out. And they did. When I chaired my first Public Safety Committee meeting, it was here where I observed his commitment for safety to our town residents, businesses, school district, but more important were and are the resources needed for our public safety team. The women, the women and men in uniform that put their lives on the line every day and every night, both on duty and off. I often refer to Leon as a statesman because he exemplifies a leader who promotes the public good, reaches across the council table, and possesses all the necessary qualities to govern. Our town, this council, town staff, and myself are beneficiaries of all your contributions. This is not goodbye, but just a pivot, like Councilor Sweeney said, into the function and role as town clerk, where your new experience will be just as beneficial to this council and to the town. I can say with confidence that Leon, Councilor Davidoff, will bring the same energy to this office just as he had to the council for the past 15 years. Thank you for your years of service to this council, but you're not done yet with public service.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Buonagret?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Davidoff, for your years of service. Did not crib that off, Carol. Both for the chapter now ending, and for the next, next chapter of that work. In trying to come up with something original to say about Mr. Davidoff, I decided to emulate him, both by wearing a suit and tie tonight, and doing some deep, some deep research into the issue of who is Leon Davidoff. Although unfortunately, no longer the case, we used to have transcripts posted for all council sessions, actual word-by-word transcripts. So, I picked one from March 2008, somewhat randomly, in your first term, to see how the Davidoff of 2008 compared to the Davidoff I started serving with four terms later. It was an interesting session, an ordinance regulating outdoor dining within the public right, public street right-of-way was set for hearing. And a resolution regarding the delivery of paramedic services was referred to committee. There was also an adjustment to the Blueback, to the Blueback District. Although not discussed that evening, we know looking back that these are some of Leon's greatest sources of pride. His work stewarding the modernization of paramedic services in town not only saved money, but shortened response times for medical emergencies. It was not an easy process. If Chris Williams is watching tonight and wants to text me, I'll give him some rebuttal time, if he can do it before I finish. But the result made our town safer. And of course, all the work on relaxing outdoor dining rules has had an immense impact in our town. But that would come later in the evening. The big excitement that night concerned the governance of the MDC. There was public comment calling for the removal of that board's chair, and a discussion of a petition to be referred to committee. Related to that issue was a question from a member of the minority party, of which Leon did in fact serve, about whether there was a conflict of interest for a member of the majority who happened to be an MDC commissioner to vote on that issue. Parentheses, there was no conflict. Leon's response to that question from a member of his own party was spot-on. And I pulled that transcript, and out of respect for you, I'm not going to edit it. So, if it goes long, it's not my fault. It is not to 12 minutes. But I will edit a little bit. But I would like to state for the record that I concur, note that phrase, I state for the record that I concur with Mr. O'Brien, Corporate Counselor of the town, that I don't believe that there is any type of ethical issues of any member of this council with, with respect to this issue. If I did think that there was, I would say so. And I don't think so. I don't think that anybody who serves on the West Hartford Town Council ought to take any type of statement like that, or charge like that from anybody else, unless they're able to substantiate what the conflict of interest is. I would be the first to recuse myself if I felt I had a conflict of interest. And I'm certain that one look at the code of professional responsibility or code of conduct would concur with Mr. O'Brien, that no member of this body, as we sit here this evening, has any conflict of interest. Now, you probably could have stopped right there, because I think you made the point. But, and I think that it is crucial to state on the record this evening, because the resolution that we are dealing with talks about ethics, integrity, and things of that nature. And it is kind of hard for people to sit in judgment of making ethical and moral decisions if you don't have clean hands to begin with. I want to state for the record that I believe that the nine people that sit on this council have the clean hands to take this issue under consideration and advisement. And again, I pulled that out randomly. This was pure Leon. Measured, nonpartisan, honest, and not for nothing, correct on your legal analysis. This is the man I served with. His integrity, hard work and preparation, and graciousness made it a pleasure to work with him, and more importantly, helped make a town stronger, safer, and more vibrant. You will be missed, but the impact you had on this town will not soon be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buonagret. You made us all cry. All of you did. Okay, Ms. Poehm.
Thank you. I'm the newest member of the town council. I've been serving for about three and a half months, so I have to ask if it's something that I did that caused you to decide to leave this table. Seriously, no. I, I spoke more comprehensively about, about you, Leon, at last month. So, tonight, I will just say this. We should all be so proud that Leon Davidoff has chosen to serve our town. His legal background, commitment, thoughtful and practical approach, and attention to detail have benefited West Hartford for more than two decades. And we are very lucky that you're going to continue to serve our town as our next town clerk. Although you're leaving this table, you will quite literally have our back in your new seat where Ms. LeBrow sits today. Thank you so much. And again, I'll add my thanks to Lexi, and Becky, and Lonnie for sharing Leon with the town of West Hartford for the past 20-plus years and moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Poehm. Ms. Fay?
Thank you very much, Mayor Kanter. First of all, I'd like to say, unlike a lot of these people around the table, I am very brief. I do speak from the heart. I don't have scripted comments normally, unless it's something very technical. But I, I just want to thank you very much for your service and the length of service. I know what it takes, and it's certainly a huge commitment of your time, your effort, away from your family, away from a lot of things that you'd probably like to do. And you've been doing this for a very long time, and the town's better off for that. And two things that I'll always remember about you, Leon, I do call you Leon mostly, not Mr. Davidoff. It's, it's hard to call somebody you've known for this amount of time by the mister, but means no lack of respect for sure. It actually means more respect probably. But the two things that I remember the most was when you called me out of order. And the thing that I remember the most about that, and I probably deserved it, I mean, I'm not saying I didn't, is that we talked the next day. And we had a great talk, and it didn't damage the relationship or anything. And I respect you for that very, very much. The other thing that I'll never forget is when my dear mom passed away, which is extremely still heartbreaking for me, you, you were there, and you came to the wake, and you probably waited three or four hours. It was, it was an incredible crowded affair, and some of my friends had to leave before they even got inside, and I will never forget that. So, thank you so much for that, and you will be missed. But I, I will still see you right here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Zedanis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I first met Leon in 1997, when we were looking for invitations for our wedding. And my wife had said, hey, I met this really nice guy. You have to come down, and we've gotta pick out invitations in Newington. So, I did. And ever since then, I have been second fiddle to my wife when Leon and I are always meet, because my wife and him got along fabulously. He, he charmed her, and, and, and to this day, they still are so very friendly. And it came from that day when we were picking out wedding invitations, and I still remember it was like it was yesterday. So, that, that was a fun event. And, but coming here, I came here from the Board of Ed, and I came here with nine years of municipal experience on the Board of Ed. And I was hoping that the continuity would exist there, that I could come in and, you know, it wouldn't be so hard as coming as a new counselor. But one of my first meetings was community planning and economic development. And I thought it might be an easy transition. But what's unique to town counselors is that we take on zoning and responsibilities for that, as we kind of did earlier today. So, I was no subject matter expert at all in zoning. Leon, as Mr. Sweeney stated, he always was there. Hey, Mark, how are you? You okay? And he goes, what can I help you with, with this committee and zoning and such? Let me, let me bring you up to speed. And he was there, and, and he was there all the time, not only for that, for other pieces, when I came on to the town council. And as a lot of people out there know and watching TV, I'm on the other side of the aisle. And that olive branch was more of a tree than it was a branch, because he was always there, and he was always giving of his time, and he helped me get through those communities, Economic and Development Committee meetings. And his subject matter expertness, his, his acumen for that type of transitions that we have to do as a town council is, is gonna be missed. And I know he'll be a, a, a phone call away. But you've been very helpful, and I appreciate that. And where we always met, too, is campaigning. We've been both at this a long time, and always run into his wife, Lexi, and always a pleasant conversation, always a good time. Never, never really a bad word ever spoken. And it was, it was reassuring, and I knew that I could always come to Leon with, with anything that I needed for advice. And if you look in the audience today, and this will go to that, is there's not only Democrats in the audience, and not that I'm calling anybody out in this, but I know we have a mix out there. And that just demonstrates that we have people from all the parties out there. And that just demonstrates, you know, that, not that olive branch that you offer, it's that olive tree that you offer, because you offer it so often and so plentiful, through your professionalism and your kindness and your, and your true compassion, you know. And, and, and Mr. Sweeney said it very, you know, very succinctly, his whole, I could have stolen his whole speech. How are you? Are you okay? And he always asked, the other thing, he always asks, how's your wife? You know, he always asked. And I always appreciated that, because I know I married up. And so, but I just, I want to thank you for your guidance and your friendship, and that help that you've provided me throughout my transition from Board of Ed to here. It has been noticeable. You're gonna be sorely missed. The acumen that you bring to this table with zoning and everything else, and your attention to detail is, is going, it has not gone unnoticed. And I, I think we all appreciate it here, and all the words that were said today demonstrate that. So, thank you, and I'm glad that this continuity of your next position, will, you'll be here for us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zedanis. Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Out of everyone in this crowded room, I've probably, I've known you the shortest amount of time. So, I'll keep this short. But all politics aside, I met you through politics, and all politics aside, you know, when, when you think about Leon, things that come to mind is thoughtful, leadership, selflessness, dedication, committed. And there's probably tons of other words. I mean, because you, you, you give so much to this community. We disagree politically on, on some issues, but at, at the end of the day, we want to make West Hartford a better place. You know, we say, I say, this is a huge loss for the council. And some people say, you know, would say, well, he's just gonna be right there. But, you know, one thing that comes up pretty often is on the record, and how important it is to put things on the record. You know, we talk about dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and that is what that on the record is, you know. So, and, and, you know, so sometimes it's 22 minutes of on the record, and, you know, I wish it would be shorter sometimes. But I understand the importance, you know, and that shows your love for, for our community. The one thing that comes, you know, that I remembered, I'll, I'll never forget, is this year convocation, sitting next to Leon in convocation. And I forget what the quote was, but we're looking at the slides, and it was something along the line, I love how, how diverse our town is. You know, and that was just random. The most random, it was a random comment. So, it wasn't like it's scripted. It wasn't like it was the right thing to say, but it's, you meant it. It was genuine. And you are a genuine person. You're a gentleman. And, you know, it's a pleasure to call you a friend. You know, I know that if I have any questions, I can reach out to you. You know, you, you answer the phone. You call, you know, during tough times. You've invited me to the West Hartford Fellowship Housing Development Board to be one of the members. And that's very important to me. You know, housing is important. So, just how much you care for the community, it's, it's a huge loss for us. But, that being said, I've said this before at the, last time we spoke about this, it's one thing to know how something operates, but to know the why. Very few people know why things work a certain way. And Leon knows the why. So, who, who better to have sit that seat over there than you, Leon Davidoff? Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. That was, all beautiful, so beautiful. I'm, I'm sure the town manager would like to say a few things, too. And I know our state delegation is here with a little. So, I, I, a lot was said in the proclamation, but I, I do want to just say a few things about Leon. A little, that I've known Leon for a very long time, worked with him. He was deputy mayor- deputy mayor twice. And when I, I worked with Leon when he was minority leader, you know, across the aisle. There was, as Mr. Zidanevitz said, there was always a tree, there was always a bridge with Leon. He is somebody that truly cares about people to his heart, as you have heard all of us say. And to Mr. Sweeney, I had that, like, how are you? How are you doing? And it wouldn't be just once. If you had a phone call where there was something in your, you know, that was bothering you, and he knew it, and he could feel it or hear it, he would call you back later that day and check on you. And there's very few people that take the time to really care like that, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. But I will also say, sometimes it was hard getting off the phone. And Michael would be like, come, Sherry, dinner's getting cold. He was always available for you, always, always, available for me, available for all of us. He was an inspiration for me right away when I, he would walk in, he was, he always attended every meeting. But a couple of times, he might have been a couple of minutes late. I remember him being very apologetic once. He was taking care of his mother with Alzheimer's, and it was challenging, and it was, you could see it emotionally and physically wearing on him. But there was never, he never complained about it. He always knew it was his, or just felt that duty and kept, you know, just doing what he needed to do. And I just, I really was in awe of you because it really, and with such patience, same thing with his sister, his nephew, and so many of us, you out there, us at the table. He's taken care of us. He doesn't carry a grudge. He is, has integrity and ethics. He is a statesman, as Carol said. He is a gentleman, I think, as maybe Deb said. He is a match. He is the definition of a match. He is a person that cares about other people and is always giving of himself. What can he do? How can he do it better? Any questions of self? He also just doesn't, I think, ever, it's quite enough, like he could always do more. There's not, people, there's just not a lot of people like you. And I just want to say how grateful I am, how grateful staff is. The staff has tremendous respect for you. How grateful the staff is, how grateful all of the residents of the town that you have listened to, I'm sure your customers that you have listened to for so many years, Mrs. Zidanevitz, and for all your colleagues that you have mentored along the years on both sides of the aisle. So, on the record, my friend, I will miss you, and the town will miss you very, very much in these shoes, and I will, in this role. And you have important shoes to fill, but nobody can quite fill Essie's shoes, I will say. But again, for the record, the most important people in the world to Leon is the people in his four walls, within the four walls. So, thank you to those four walls. Thank you, Lexi, Lonnie, and Becky for letting us have Leon. Okay. I have just, we have the proclamation of the state delegation. Why don't you guys come on up to present? And then I just have a little, just a couple little West Hartford moments I can give for you. And of course, and the, yeah, and the chair that he can't take because it's.
Mr. Davidoff.
I'll read the plaque before you guys.
Absolutely.
Okay. Leon S. Davidoff, West Hartford Town Council, 2023, Minority Leader, 11/7/2029, 2009, sorry, Deputy Mayor, 2005/2016, 11/2017, 11/2019 to 11/2021.
Awesome. Can I just sit? No? Good. I'm so glad that the snow didn't cancel tonight's meeting. I was texting our mayor and Dallas, you know, because I really, we really wanted to be here for this amazing evening. And gratitude is what I feel most for you, obviously deep, biding respect. But up at the Capitol, West Hartford has the sterling reputation, and we look at the bond rating, we look at the schools, we look at the quality of life, the public safety, and you all know that doesn't happen by accident. That happens because of great public servants like you. And so, just so grateful to have you as a friend, and we're lucky to have you in our community. And for somebody who not only serves the community but lives here with kids in the schools and everything, I mean, you have, you made all our lives better, and you're just such a role model for how you govern with civility and class. And you look across the aisle, you don't see other, you see people to work with and to make our community better. So, I'm going to hand it over to Kate, and I know you have a few words, and then we have this citation for you as well.
Hi, Leon. So nice to see you and this crowd and your colleagues. And just to add to what Senator Slapp said, I think one of the things that I have learned from you immensely is not just your thoughtful approach, but also that you are always kind of have your eyes peeled for how our community can be improved. And I was especially moved a few months ago when you were doing your regular drive, I believe, between home and Newington, and you mentioned this idea to me that the, in Elmwood, under the train bridge, could be an incredible location for a mural. And because Leon, again, kind of as he travels our town, you know, he's not just thinking about his neighborhood, he's thinking about our whole town. And in coming to me with that idea, you know, we have taken steps and, you know, with his involvement and the involvement of our West Hartford Art League and the support of the state, we are going to have a mural under that train bridge. And I really just highlight it as another physical indication of how Leon is mindful of how we can, again, continue to improve and beautify and just honor all of our neighborhoods in West Hartford. So, thank you, Leon, for doing that and being such a model for us in that way. So, on behalf of the State of Connecticut, the General Assembly, this is an official citation introduced by Senator Derek Slapp, Representative Gillian Gilchrist, myself, Representative Kate Farrar, Representative Bobby Gibson, Representative Tammy Exum, and be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Leon Stuart Davidoff, and it's in recognition of.
All right. We're tag teaming it here. Your many years of dedicated public service to the town of West Hartford, including four years as deputy mayor, seven years on town planning and zoning, 16 years on the council, we thank you for guiding us on so many issues, especially zoning. With your knowledge and expertise, always striving and serving with civility and decency to find common ground, we applaud your countless contributions to our community. We wish you health and happiness in your future endeavors. This is by the entire membership of the General Assembly on this 28th of February 2023, and it's signed by the Senate President, Marty Looney, the Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and our Secretary of State. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Slapp and Representative Farrar for being here and for the whole delegation. Mr. Ledwith, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words to Leon. And I've had the opportunity to work with him and know him for 15 years since he joined the town council. And as Leon would say, he's sat in just about every one of these chairs around this table. So, and not many people can say that or actually have done that. So, hats off to you for that. It's been over the last year that our relationship changed as I moved into this role, and Leon really did serve as a real mentor to me right up until today, tonight's meeting. And Kate talked about his commutes to, from home to Newington and from Newington to home, and Leon would often call me on many of those commutes, both in the morning and in the evening. But it was always for the good of West Hartford and helping me kind of help the town and make sure we were where we needed to be and doing what we needed to do to make sure that our town always continued to grow and be better. But it was over these many, many phone calls that we also developed a friendship, a friendship evolved over that time. And our talks turned from what was best to the town to what was happening with our families, whether it was Lexi or Tara and Becky and Lonnie and Jack and Emily and Shannon. It was all about what's going on in our families and, you know, our time away from our families and just that friendship evolved. So, I'm very, very appreciative of that. As I said, and as we've all said, he's sat in all of these chairs. He's moving to that chair back there with Essie. I've worked with Essie for 15 years as well, and over the last year, I've learned a lot about what she does, and I know we are going to be in great hands with Leon moving in and trying to fill those big shoes as Essie retires. And we have two chairs over here. With 15 years of service, you're probably qualified to sit in this chair as town manager. And with your degree in law, you could probably sit right here as the corporation council as well. So, congratulations on everything you've accomplished over the last 15 years, Leon, and we look forward to, I look forward to working with you as my colleague now as a town clerk and working with you every single day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Now, you've got to go to his meetings or soon. All right. Mr. Davidoff, do you have a few words you want to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hold on. I knew my good friends on the other side of the aisle were starting their timer, so I've got journal notes from the last 15 years, so. But we're not going to do them tonight, so we'll just put these away, and we'll go to the abbreviated version. Thank everyone for their very kind, kind words. Just a brief note to say thank you. Since being elected in 2007, I'm proud to report that there have been 321 formal town council meetings, and I've attended 320 of them, with the one absence being March 13, 2012, the day that my mom passed away. For those who enjoy numbers, that's an attendance rate of 99.68%. As I've stated on many occasions, I have enjoyed being a part of the zoning authority of our wonderful community. Prior to serving on the town council, I served two stints on the Town Plan and Zoning Commission with three years of my service as the commission's chair. Listening and participating in numerous public hearings, such as the joint TPZ Town Council hearings on Blueback Square to inland wetlands petitions, prepared me well for my service on the town council with respect to zoning matters. Some of the significant measures that we enacted to make West Hartford a better place to live during my tenure on the council were the adoption of a complete streets policy, an outdoor dining ordinance that promotes a vibrant dining experience, a revision to our drive-through establishment ordinance to enhance consumer convenience, and an entertainment ordinance that allows safe and fun activities while respecting the concerns of abutters. Quality of life issues are important to all of our residents, and my perspective has been to bring balance and harmony among the various competing interests so that new developments can coexist alongside with existing uses. Sometimes change is difficult to accept, yet progress requires reasonable and measured development. Whenever I drive throughout the community, it is readily apparent to me that for over two decades, I have played a small part in improving and making positive change to the landscape of our town. Throughout my life, I've enjoyed being involved in organizations such as the Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, and the School PTO, to name a few. And serving on the West Hartford Town Council will always be a cherished memory where I was able to provide service above self. However, none of my public service would have been possible without the support of so many in my life. I want to recognize those who have been there along my journey. First, a big thank you to Lexi, Becky, and Lonnie for allowing me the time to dedicate to the town. As you've often heard me say, the most important people in your life live within the four walls of your house. In my case, without your unconditional support and love, I would not have been able to serve. I know that I missed a lot of school activities and time at the dining table, yet none of you ever complained, and we always found a way to make things work out so that I could be there for you when you needed me. Second, to my sister Susan, my business partner, I'm truly grateful for your understanding, love, and support throughout the years. Even though you did not share my interest in politics, you always provided a listening ear and sound advice. When her mom was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, she had one request, to be cared at home. We honored her request for an entire decade, which required juggling our daily schedule so I could attend meetings and community events as well as take the necessary time to hit the campaign trail. Thank you for helping me out. It really means a lot to me. To my friends, I am thankful for your friendship throughout the years. While many of you didn't understand my passion for local politics, you stood with me and assisted with my campaigns by hosting a lawn sign, making a campaign contribution, writing a letter to the editor, or hosting a campaign fundraiser. And even though at times it seemed like we had not gotten together in a while, we have always been able to pick up where we left off. As the saying goes, that's what friends are for. To all my friends on the DTC, thank you for the support that each of you has shown me from the endorsements of my candidacy, assistance in my campaign endeavors, and sharing my love of politics. And to all of those I met at various community events and fundraisers, I've enjoyed our conversations and our shared visions to support the many wonderful activities in town which make West Hartford such a special place. To the four town managers I've had the honor to work with, Mr. Francis, Mr. Van Winkle, Mr. Hart, and Mr. Ledwith, thank you for taking my calls, working on the issues and concerns that I have shared with you, especially when one of our residents was seeking assistance with an issue. Our community has been quite fortunate to have such professional, outstanding leaders managing the affairs of our town on a daily basis. To all of the town department and directors, employees, your commitment to excellence shines in all of your daily activities. All of my interactions throughout the year have been examples of how government works for our residents and our businesses. And when individuals have gone beyond the call of duty, I have always been proud that we recognize your efforts. To the Board of Education members, administration, staff, and teachers, your dedication to meeting the educational needs of all our West Hartford families has never been compromised, and for this, I am thankful. To my friends in the media, thank you for all of your efforts to keep our community informed. Rodney Newton, your accurate, detail-oriented, fair and balanced reporting is greatly appreciated by me and our community. And Jen Evans, you and your volunteers to Channel 5 WHCI are the best when it comes to community programming. You truly are in the community, deserve the community. To my council colleagues over the years, I have been so fortunate to serve alongside so many dedicated, capable leaders who volunteer on the town council for one shared purpose, to make West Hartford the best town to live, to work, and to raise a family. So, to the 26 individuals who I call council colleagues, Steve, Tim, Sherry, Chuck, Scott, Joe, Carolyn, Joe, Rob, Denise, Harry, Burke, Claire, Chris, Beth, Ben, Chris, Liam, Dallas, Mary, Carol, Lee, Adrian, Alberto, Mark, and Deb, we have made a difference in shaping our community. While we may not have always agreed, I've listened to your viewpoints, and at times I've seen things in a different light. So, thank you for all of your volunteer service to our community. It has not gone unnoticed. During my 15 years on the council, I have had the good fortune of serving together with two very special people. First, it's been my honor to serve with my friend, Sherry Cantor. I appreciate your hard work, your dedication to our community, your strong and capable leadership, and most importantly, your friendship. I will cherish the fond memories that we have shared, and I look forward to working with you, Madam Mayor, as I transition into my new role. And it's been a privilege to serve with my good friend, Essie LeBrow. While you're known as the best town clerk in the entire state of Connecticut, you earned that reputation. Your professionalism, your attention to detail, your kind nature, and your commitment to our town are unmatched. It has been said that I will have big shoes to fill. I understand that you wear a women's size six and a half shoe, and I wear a men's size 12 double wide shoe. Yes, it will be challenged to fill those shirts of yours, but rest assured, I'm up to meeting the challenge. I'm excited to continue my service to the town of West Hartford as our town's next town clerk. And to the residents of West Hartford, I am grateful for the trust and confidence that you have placed in me to serve on our town's governing body. I've been driven by one concept, to make a great town even better. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to serve our community, a place that I am proud to call home. Thank you.
Well, that was one of yours shorter. That was, yeah. Awesome. Leon, thank you so much for everything. This is so weird. Well, that was one of yours shorter. Really? That was, yeah. Awesome. Leon, thank you so much for everything. This is so weird. We got to go to announcements. It just feels very awkward. Okay. All those, wait, we need to, we, we made a motion, we seconded in discussion, now we go to the voice vote, right? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
How abstained.
Yeah. Any opposed? Motion carries. Leon, it's really, it's real hard. Anyway. All right. Now to announcements and then adjournment. Vines of March, March 4th, Rotary Club of West Hartford, this is the 11th Annual Vines of March, guest MCs are Dennis House and Kara Sunland. And this is a big fundraiser for Rotary Club that does so much for our community. It will be at Town Hall Auditorium, right here, 7:00 PM to 10:30, and again, March 4th. Connecticut Spelling Bee, March 5th, Noah Webster House, this will be at University of St. Joseph's. This year's statewide spelling bee boasts the largest number of enrolled students in grades four through eight. Since its beginning, the competition begins at 1:00. Please come cheer on Connecticut's top spellers. Event is free and open to the public. Doors open at 12:30. Hall High's 65th Pops and Jazz Extravaganza, March 10th through 18th. Come sail away with Hall High's acclaimed jazz band, dancers, singers, and actors. The nautical-themed 65th Annual Production show opens March 10th with additional evening performances on the 11th, 16th, 17th, and 18th. Tickets are now on sale for all performances. Go to the hallhighjazz.com website. Taste of Ireland Tavern Night, March 17th. To enjoy Noah's Home Irish Fair, an Irish fair, live music, drinks, tavern games. Join us on St. Patrick's Day, Friday, March 17th, for a home-cooked feast, unique entertainment. Tickets include food, entertainment, and one drink. Dinner starts at 6:00 PM. Doors open at 5:30 for cocktails to preview the tavern games. And there's a link to tickets on the website. Also, State of the Town was supposed to be today, and it was, it is postponed till Thursday at 11:30 at the Pond House. If you can still make it, if you can't, contact the Chamber for, I guess, a refund. And does anybody else have any announcements? Mr. Sweeney?
This is the number 12.
Oh, we will go back to that. Yes, Ms. Fay.
Don't forget, the St. Patrick's Day Parade is the 11th in Hartford, and I think it might be a big anniversary. I forget if it's the 50th or 60th, but don't forget to be there.
Yes, and we have two wonderful community members that are honored in that, Mr. Feeney and Mr. Carr. So, awesome. And hopefully it won't snow. All right. Mr. Cortez?
And then, if, for those who are familiar with City Singers, they're going to have a performance at West Hartford United Methodist Church on Sunday, March 12th, at 4:00 PM, called Celtic Fire. No reservations. It's first come, first served, and a donation, and the proceeds from that donation will go to support the Friendship Center over in New Britain.
Terrific, and they're great. It'll be a lot of fun. Any other? Okay. We skipped over 12, this executive session that Mr. Dodge had mentioned. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, without objection, make a motion to postpone the executive session until March 8, 2023.
Second.
Is there, I don't think, well, without any objection, right? So, yeah. Okay, that's okay. We're all good. All right. We'll take your second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Without objection, if there's no other announcements, right? Without objection, I move that we adjourn. Is there any objection? We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here for Leon. Appreciate it very much.